That's the people's sign language. Today is Tuesday, December 9 of 2025, and as I mentioned, we will call the order, this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We appreciate everybody's joining us today. A couple of housekeeping items. We are live streaming the meeting and we're also recording the meeting. And if you have a cellphone, if you please put it on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that courtesy. We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. And I'll ask Commissioner Kennedy if he can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you all very much. Ryan, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. We have a quorum. All three commissioners are present and accounted for. During the course of this public meeting, we have two times for, two opportunities for public comment. One in just a few moments, and then one before we adjourn. If you'd like to make some comments, we welcome them. You're welcome to speak both times. You're welcome to speak one of the two times, or if you're just here to listen, that's also fine. We ask that your comments be related to county government matters. If it's a federal or a state issue, we would refer you to your federal or state legislators. The same would be true if it's a local, city, borough, township, school district issue. You may want to talk to those folks. But if it's related to county government, you're at the right place. And we would also request that during the comment period, if you try to limit your time to about five minutes or so, we appreciate that courtesy. Hopefully everybody got a copy of the agenda. Moving along, none of our row officers are here today. They're not required to be here, but we set aside time in the event that any of them wish to speak to us. So that takes us to public comment. If you do have a comment, we'll recognize you. And if you could state your name for the record and what municipality you're from, and then we'll hear what you have to say. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Mark Calderini. I'm a resident of North Beaver Township. I'm here also to, it's a matter of introduction, I'm a member of the Western Pennsylvania Firemen's Association, also a member of the North Beaver Township Volunteer Fire Department, and a local emergency planning committee. I sit on that, do some help, and work with them. The, my position with the, let me just call it the WPFA, instead of saying that a lot, is a county liaison person for Lawrence County. We have fourteen, sixteen, I'm sorry now, sixteen counties that we represent, over forty, over four thousand firefighters, three hundred and eighty fire departments represented by that organization. So yes, we are a state organization, but a tenth of the WPFA is to have a person that is represented in each of those counties. And you're looking at the Lawrence County representative for that. So there are a number of issues that we are now involved in, some of which have the word Kelly in there. And they are, they do include the relief reform act that is being worked through the state legislature, as long, as well as the countywide public safety authority that is working on some issues there, and also EMS reform and 911 funding. There are other ones there that I won't get into. But the point of this is that I need to let the WPFA know if there's any issues that come up in Lawrence County, and also if there's anything that you folks would like, or anybody in the county government would like to talk about. We are playing an active role in Harrisburg, along with other organizations, the Career Fire Chiefs Association, for example, in Pennsylvania, that on the career side, and, but there are other volunteer organizations as well. So we just want to make a connection here, in case anything comes up, and if there's anything we can help you out with, I'd be glad, happy to sit down and talk to you.
Well, thank you so kindly. May I ask you a couple of questions?
Certainly.
First, would you mind, for my benefit, spelling your last name? Alderini?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, it, it, your visit here today is quite timely. My two colleagues and I just returned right before Thanksgiving. We belong to the State County Commissioners Association, and our organization meets three times a year. So we were down in Dauphin County. And one of the things we did is we established, it's known as CCAP, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania.
Sure.
We established some of our priorities for 2026. And I'll look to my colleagues, make sure I say this right. EMS funding was one of them, is that correct?
Sure it was, yeah.
Yes. And in fact, that would be in the top three as far as our concerns relative to state legislation. So we're well aware, and we get, we do get a lot of communication from our state association, particularly on matters such as many of the ones you referenced.
Yes.
We also receive, again, you're very timely, we get each month from the State Township Supervisors Association, which Mr. Kennedy used to belong to, and the State Boroughs Association, we get their monthly magazines. Earlier this morning, I was just reading the township one. And usually, there's, there's information in there relative to firefighting, emergency management matters, that sort of thing. So other question, final question I have for you. Have you had dealings, or will you have dealings with our public safety department, specifically our director, Mr. Strobel?
Actually, I know Mr. Strobel well from the LAPC. And so we have, we have a friend relationship there. But formally, in this matter, not yet. My intention also is to, because I know the County Fire Chiefs Association, it beats, I would like to get more involved with that, seeing it from the fire department point of view, as well as EMS. Look, our intent is to improve services, provide the best possible service to the citizens of Lawrence County, or at least I am. I think we all understand and appreciate the fact that staffing is in dire need of support. Yes, there's money involved, but we got to get people. And how we do that, there's a lot of things that can be done, and we should be working with local and county officials to try to enhance that and provide the best possible service we can.
And I appreciate that. What I'll do before we wrap up, I have one of my business cards. I don't know if my colleagues have theirs or not, but I'll give you my business card, which has my email address. So going forward, and if they don't have their cards, I'd be happy to pass it on to them.
Sure, no, I have to say.
And I'm going to obviously give each of them a chance to ask questions. But when we finish here, I'll give you my card. It looks like Dan has his. See if Chris has one. If not, oh, wonderful. Look at that. Let me see if my colleague, Commissioner Kennedy, has any questions.
I just have one. You're involved with every township or every fire department in Lawrence County?
Are we involved? As far as membership in the WPFA? I don't know what, to be honest with you, I don't know yet how many or who are members in Lawrence County. My guess, it's very limited. But I don't know that for sure. I know that we had a representative here a while back, and I believe the gentleman, I can't remember his name, passed away, so, a while ago. So we're trying to reinstate this. But my intention, and to your point, my intention is to not only increase membership in the WPFA, but increase awareness on what, what they're, at the local level, what they can do to help improve services, both on EMS and fireside. I've been, I've been in the fire service since the seventies, as well as the paramedics since the seventies. So, yeah, I moved into this area three years ago. We moved into this area three years ago. And I see some challenges here, and we need to do everything we can. So I will reach out to the Fire Chiefs Association. That will, that will kind of address that.
But two things. Thank you for your service, and thank you for Lawrence County.
Yeah.
Great. Always glad to welcome new, you're a relatively new resident, so.
Yeah, I don't know every, you know, I don't know all the people in North Beaver Township, but some of the guys just suddenly come, people down there. Yeah.
Commissioner Sanado, any questions?
I remember I mentioned you out of North Beaver and.
That's the East Purdy.
Yes, that's right. I know that gentleman. You had just moved here, I think, at the time, and we had a good conversation, you know, your background. I said, that's great because we were like you in the county and understand, you know, what it means to tell everything. I go with Commissioner Kennedy, so it's good, you know, to reach out. We have, we really have some good fire chiefs in this county. Many have spent forty, fifty years in the service.
Right.
And you've got a long history, even North Beaver. Oh, yeah, they have a good group out there. Yeah. We look forward, our doors open, and we try to have a good relationship. For my prior career in legislature, I served as chairman of the Professional Affairs Emergency Preparations Committee for twelve years. So a lot of those issues went through our committee.
Right.
And it's, it's a very difficult thing, because we can only, we can't move programs, incentives, but you don't have young people. You don't have those family linkage that you once had.
Yep.
In Lawrence County, I think you'll find, especially some of our volunteer fire companies, they had, you know, years of service from grandfather to father, grandchildren, all linkage. I come from Union, and you had about three families that made up probably half the fire department. The Shenan, Shenan, I mean.
Same thing.
It's the same thing. Rest in peace. Now, we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Like I said, our door is open.
Thank you, boys. Sir, you're welcome to stay for the meeting if you like. They're kind of dry and boring, but you're welcome to stay. If you have to run along, we understand. Trade you. But we appreciate your taking the time to visit us, and you're, we meet every Tuesday at ten, for the most part. And you're always welcome.
Thank you. I will, I will not be at every meeting, but occasionally I'll stop in and, you know, please, an open invite to give me a call if there's anything you would like to discuss.
That's great to know.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Calderini. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment at this time? Hearing none, thank you all. Next on the agenda, under fiscal and contractual, we did receive bids for three properties as it relates to the county's repository. I'll walk us through them. The first, what number would we assign this first one, Ryan?
Three eight five.
Thank you. This is Proposed Resolution 385. This is for a parcel in Shenango Township, specifically ID number three one dash three two zero three zero zero. And the person making the bid was Mary Chavez, Chavez, five hundred dollar bid. The Shenango Area School Board voted to accept this bid on October 14 of this year. It appears we did not hear back from the township. Accordingly, then, that leaves it to us as to whether or not we would wish to accept the five hundred dollar bid on this parcel. I'll open it up for questions or a motion, whichever, from my fellow commissioners.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion?
We have, Mr. Burek here. Mr. Burek, do you have any comment on this?
Just here to answer if you have any questions. Obviously, I recommend approval when the municipalities or the school districts approve it, because it gets that property back on the tax rolls.
We appreciate you being here. That's why I want to talk. So you don't have no concern?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Burek, and thank you, Mr. Sanado. Dan, any concerns?
Any on any of them?
No concerns on any.
All but accepted, by some of us. Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call on three eighty-five, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
You'd accept the bid?
I'll second.
Thank you both. Discussion? We heard from Mr. Burek, zero three three one zero zero. And the Newcastle City Council approved this on November 21, and it appears we did not hear back from the Newcastle Area School District. So that is now in our hands. Gentlemen, would one of you wish to make a motion?
I'll make them.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any concerns, questions? We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I made a, I have made an oversight on the previous number three eighty-six. I neglected to enter the property ID number. It's zero three dash zero zero one zero zero zero. That takes care of our repository bids. Mr. Burek, anything else for us today? Well, you're welcome to stick around, but if you have to head back up, we, we understand.
I will shortly. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We have, here, give me a minute. We have warrant registers from the county comptroller's office, also known as check reconciliation registers. They are dated December 2, December 3, and December 5. And Dan and Chris, please take whatever time you need to look them over. And whenever you're ready, I could have a motion, please, for us to accept these documents.
I've looked them over as well, and I'll make a motion to accept the documents.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Do either of you have any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The minutes of the December 2 meeting are in our packet. Once again, gentlemen, please take the time you need to glance at them, and whenever you're ready, we can take a motion to adopt the minutes.
Joe, are you ready?
I'll make a motion to accept the motion.
Dan, thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second. The motion.
It was little Chris. If there are no other concerns, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Under correspondence, we did receive one document written to us from Elwood Remount Steel, which is based at 40 Furnace Street in the city of Newcastle. And the project is a homogenizing furnace plan approval. They have applied to the Department of Environmental Protection for an NPDES permit renewal. And Administrative Code of the Commonwealth requires that the municipality and the county be advised in writing of applications such as this one. So they are making us aware of this act 14 notification. Chris, any questions? Dan? May I have a motion to accept this letter?
I make a motion to accept the letter.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under Commissioner Reports and Comments, I get to go first. I was, I was going to note, but I'm going to, I'm going to defer to you. I was going to mention that the prison board already met this. I'm going to let you talk about this, since you chair the board, if you don't mind. Okay, I appreciate that. And I do want to also note, and probably make mention of it later in the meeting, but the planning commission, the monthly county planning commission meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. I believe that's all I have at this time. Mr. Kennedy, you're back.
It's the Lucha Wampa Parade.
Oh, so I did. Well, you can talk about it.
So Dan and I went down to Wampa on Saturday for the annual Christian parade. Cold but fun day. So we went down there. The only other thing I have, Chris and I went to Ford Lawrence's reception at the Hoya on Thursday night. Hoya was really well attended. Lot of good food. So nice evening out. That's all I have. Chris, you can take it from there.
I'll just echo what you said, Commissioner Kennedy. I thought, I think that the point was really well decorated. It was nice to see a lot of, many business people in our community were there. And a lot of them were the people that were the customer ratings for within the last year or two. And a lot of them seemed to be doing well in Lawrence. And I'll throw one shout out out there. These two young ladies who are going to be opening a bakery, you're not going to watch.
That's what I hear.
And I don't know if you tasted one, but I tasted one. It was outstanding. I think these two young ladies are going to be very successful in New Wellington. It's nice when you see young entrepreneurs making a commitment to the community. And it was, and you also had those young men from the Labor Union who opened the other facility in New Wellington. They were there, and I had a chance to talk to them. And they said they're doing well. So it's nice when you see small businesses that are starting to prosper a little bit in the county. So I think that's the avenue. And Ford Lawrence is doing a really good job, I think, of trying to get that message out there. Second thing, I had an opportunity Friday to go up to the Northwest Commission, have a chance to, we had some presentations and stuff, and got a chance to see some commissioners from, from the Northwest. And Dan, your friend, Jo Foyes, she made a nice presentation. She went quite a long though. When she's passionate about something, Jo goes on, she goes, we had a half hour presentation, so I'm not going to speak too long. I think Jo eclipsed that. But a lot of positive things are starting to happen in the Northwest as well. And I know with things that are happening with the Southwest. Commissioner Kennedy, you're going to be participating. Actually, this weekend, next week, we'll be going down to the regional meeting. A lot of positive things starting to happen. So that's pretty much all I have.
One thing I read, was reading yesterday about the Northwest Commission and their Court Connect broadband. I don't know how many people know this, but they brought ninety million dollars in broadband. Part of that's coming here to Lawrence County. Tom McKinley is leading the drive on that.
Yes, he is. I give Mr. McKinley a lot of credit. We appointed him to a board, and he shows up. There's not too many names who's not at personal, and in off weeks, he's on it.
That's a lot of good Wilmington people, that's why.
But now, he's, he's thought a really good job in the Northwest. And he was our appointee, and he really excelled at that. But we appoint people to boards, you know, you always like people to participate. And I give Mr. Kennedy a lot of credit. Because sometimes people do it by thought, or, you know, telecomm. He's there personally. And I believe in doing that was a personal contact. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thanks.
Thank you both, gentlemen. And we're blessed. Mr. McKinley, who resides in Wilmington Township, as noted, is our private sector representative to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission Board. He has been for many years a very active member on that board. So thank you, gentlemen. The first item on our agenda, Ryan, I have to go back here. What number would this be?
Three eighty-eight.
Three eighty-eight? Thank you. This time each year, we propose the upcoming year's operating budget for the county. State law requires that it be introduced and put on public display for three weeks. So we are introducing it today, and then on the last Tuesday of this month, which I believe is December 30, if I'm not mistaken, we will, the board will convene at our regular meeting and more than likely adopt the budget. I'll let Joe talk about it. We've been, we've been very fortunate in this county, as long as I've been a board, board member here. I've had the pleasure of working with three different county administrators, Charlene Miko, Jim Gagliano, and the gentleman to my left, Joe Vanasco. And one of their primary responsibilities is to formulate each year's county budget. And it's a lot of work. Joe put a lot of hours into it. He has consultation with each row officer and department head. I know you had a lot of assistance, as you have in the past, from our good friend over in the MHDAS, Albert Antonelli assists you. And we get tremendous cooperation from the county comptroller's office. And I'm going to let Joe give the good news. I think this is, this is a budget that I think we're all very comfortable with. But since you've worked so hard on it, why don't I turn it over to you, and you give us the good news?
Absolutely. I'll keep it short and sweet. You know, this process of doing a budget, it starts literally on the first of September, with our first, really, consultation in distributing items to our elected officials and our department heads. And this year, we were able to, again, balance the budget with, with no tax increase. We had basically a point six percent increase in real estate revenue this year. However, approximately a three percent decrease in total revenue in our budget. And the three percent, usually through the course of the year. And the reason there's a decrease is we get different grants at different times throughout the year, and we do budget amendments later in the year. That probably, will probably bring it back up. At this point, we were looking at about a three percent decrease in total revenue. And it coincides with also the three percent decrease in our overall expenditures. Outside of that, just as you said, Commissioner, a big thanks to Albert Antonelli and his assistants, and Joel Prestifine, and equally, if not more important, the commissioners, our department heads, and our elected officials. Everybody works very well together to be able to balance this budget. And when I call one of our department heads or elected officials, just discuss a different line of, it just went so well. Like I said, it's a long process. Very pleased with the budget. And as we move forward throughout the year, I'm sure we'll see that, that revenue increase back up to its normal, or where it was at this year. But as of right now, generally, a three percent increase and a three percent decrease in expenditures.
Joe, I'll add just a couple of things, and just reiterate that when we vote today, the budget will be on display. You can come and see a hard copy in the commissioner's office. It'll be on the front counter. It will also be put on the county's website. Now, that may take a little time for them to get it loaded onto the website. Maybe, I don't know, maybe by later today or tomorrow.
Later, later tomorrow morning, we'll have it on the, on the website as well.
The budget, I believe, and correct if I'm wrong, it does anticipate for our management and non-union employees, a three percent cost of living adjustment to their salaries and wages. Obviously, our union employees are, were governed by the union contracts that are in place. So that may vary from union to union. The elected officials, we're not sure yet what percentage we will get in terms of a cost of living adjustment. That's based on a regional consumer price index figure that is supposed to come out within the next week, I think.
We should have it within the next four or five weeks.
Okay. I know you watch for it. Comptroller Prestifine watches for it. We have an ordinance on the books that states that the elected officials will receive a cost of living adjustment commensurate with the consumer price index. I believe it's in the northeast region of the country. I think that's what they utilize. I believe at this point, that's all I want to add. Again, we will convene on December 30 and more than likely take the vote to adopt the budget. In conjunction with that, state law does require that at the beginning of the year, specifically the first Monday between January 5, we're by law required to have an annual salary board meeting. At which time, if the budget is passed and it includes the three percent wage adjustment for management and non-union people, that's one of the things we'll have to do on January 5, at the salary board meeting, is we take votes on each department, and not on each department, but on each row office and all the departments that fall under the commissioner. I do anticipate that early next week, and I don't have the date nailed down yet, but I anticipate that early next week, we will have a special salary board meeting. We've had some requests from some of the elected officials and some of the department heads that, we've had a couple of executive sessions to discuss. And I do anticipate that. And I do anticipate that early next week, we will convene to address some of those requests. So those are some things from a procedural standpoint. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kennedy for comments or questions that you might have.
Another comment I have is, you know, I sat in Joe's office a lot while they were going through this stuff. We can't thank Kevin Albert enough for what he did. It's line item by line item. I think I spent a lot of time in it with department heads and row officers. This year, I think I spent more time in it than I did last year. I think I drove him crazy a few times. He wanted to throw me out, but he didn't. Thank you, Joe.
That's in our job description, isn't it?
Yeah, yep.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Thanks, Dan. Mr. Sonato?
I'll just have to go with Commissioner Kennedy's comment. Joe, you did a fine job. This is our second budget as a board of commissioners. I think we've all played somewhat of an active role in this because, you know. Last year was our early first year because we have another budget we committed. To go through revenue, Joe, you've been very helpful because we've had a lot of questions. And, you know, like I said, Debbie, well, you know, we're even talking a few dollars. You always move those numbers around. I think that's so important. I also like to commend a lot of our row officers, a lot of you've committed, they've cut expenses. And that's good. I mean, we were in a tough position this year because it stayed budgeted. We didn't have a budget for four months. We didn't know what some of the revenues were going to make. So you did a good job estimating, you know. We had other costs that gone up, some costs we've tried to get down. I think the job we did about a year ago with our electric rates. I think that's paid dividends within the budget because of, you know, the rates have gone up substantially. We were having a curve by looking into hiring the firm to get us the lowest rates. And we locked it in before they went up. So these are some of the things I think we've done as a board that's been so helpful, you know, in keeping the revenues. You know, we've seen investments in the community as far as economic projects or things are starting to happen in the county. These are long-term goals, but as you said, Sharon Bummer, you know, our revenue went up. A slight amount on property taxes. That's the only revenue we get. We don't get school debt, we don't get any income tax, capital tax, we don't get anything except property taxes. So the ultimate goal of this board is to grow the, the, more houses, more things like that. And more businesses coming in that are paying property taxes. That spreads the burden out amongst everyone else. So I think that's the ultimate goal. I think this budget addresses the needs. And we have to make sure our needs of many of our social services, which we have the responsibility, it's pass-throughs as. And we've done a very good job of helping many local organizations in our community. We were fortunate to be able to do that this past year. And hopefully next year, we can continue that process. So I'm very pleased with this budget. It's a fiscally responsible budget. And I think that's the most important, fiscally responsible budget. We look at expenses and we try to be fair and we try to be reasonable with all our row officers and all of our people that have come up here. We don't have unlimited allowance money, you know, so we have to do it. And we've given Joe a name. We call him the cheat cook. Because Joe, and we like that Joe, that's a good nickname.
My wife would, my wife would say the same thing, of course. No, she wouldn't.
No, I think it's important. We're all on the same page. I think this shows that when you have three people that can work together. I think that shows positive results. And we've done that. And I think this budget shows that we have a commitment to the people. There's no tax increase, which is so important in the community. So that's pretty much all I say. I know, and Joe, once again, you and Albert, thank you because I know it wasn't an easy job. You spent many hours here. When we left, you guys are still back there crunching. And one, one bad, you know, grant bond coming in or something like that has a major effect on the budget. So you try to put in those safeguards and I think it's so important. So if we want to continue on the path that we're on, hopefully next year, we can say the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sonato. Joe, anything else?
No.
This is proposed resolution three eighty-eight. This is the introduction of the budget. I want to make it clear, we're not adopting the budget today. We're simply introducing it. It will be on display for twenty-one days. And we will consider this on December thirty. We'll have it on the agenda on December thirty for final adoption. If there are no other concerns, may I have a motion for resolution three eighty-eight, which will allow us to introduce this proposed budget?
I'll make a motion. We introduce the budget?
Then I'll shake it. Thank you, gentlemen. Any final concerns? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, thanks Ryan. Next on the agenda under boards. The county commissioners have the authority and responsibility to appoint members to the Lawrence County Conservation District Board of Directors. And there's a gentleman who currently serves on that board, whose term will be expiring. And we'd like to reappoint him. They have, the state has categories for that board, one of which is a farmer slash agricultural representative, if you will. The gentleman that we're considering today owns a farm in Perry Township. Blaine Sturgeon is his name. He lives on Bates Road down in Perry Township. And our action today would reappoint him to the Conservation District for a four-year term. Expiring on December thirty-one of twenty twenty-nine. I represent the commissioners on that board and I can speak very highly of Mr. Sturgeon and everything that he brings to that board. His working knowledge of agriculture and it's a real asset to that board. So I'd strongly support his reappointment. This is resolution three eighty-nine. Dan, questions?
No.
Thank you, Chris.
No, I just thought I could accept that I had a chance to talk to him. About this year, the prior year at the. Dinner, the luncheon, and I'm very impressed with the gentleman. And his kids as well. Are they both very active with the farm on Perry Township?
And his mom and dad, too.
Yes. So I'm very impressed with the gentleman, so. Thank you for him serving, and we appreciate him serving the other four years.
Yes, we do. Thank you. By the way, Debbie, I know you periodically attend the, their annual luncheon. Did you know that this year it starts an hour earlier?
I believe I'm off that. They have spoken to Mary about it already.
Okay. Do you think Nick can join us?
I don't know. We're all pretty busy, so. I already contacted her and told her I'd like to write about it, but I can't be there.
I see.
And I'd like to do whatever story they have on the farmer that's honored this year.
If your plans change, it does start at eleven instead of noon. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Now, this is resolution three eighty-nine that would reappoint Mr. Sturgeon. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Sonato?
Yes.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution three ninety involves the adult probation office of Leanne Pyatt is here today. Hi, Leanne.
Hi, how are you?
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
May I ask, would you mind sitting in the, so the microphone can pick you up?
Absolutely, great.
Again, thanks for bearing with us.
Not a problem.
So good to have you here.
Thank you.
This is, looks like this is for the GPS satellite-based monitoring system for house arrest. Your electronic monitoring program that you have some information for us about it?
Yes. So the, back in December of twenty twenty, we entered in a contract with Correctional Development, which is CPI. Which they're still the same agency, it's still the same service and everything. It's just that they have moved to a new name called Gov AI and Solutions. The contract is the same price that we've had from five years ago, so nothing is going to be increased. We are very happy with our service. It has reduced the rates of call out for overtime for illegitimate strapped, strapped campers of house arrests. Meaning someone cut their bracelet. At this time, all the ones that have, which are very few and far in between, have been legitimate campers. So it has helped a lot. And some other services that they provide to streamline stuff. So the only difference is it's the name, but everything else remains the same as that we have.
Great. Well, thank you. And I assume at some point, we'll have the contract for the three of us to sign?
Yes.
Okay, great. Leanne, I'm going to see if my colleague, Mr. Sonato, has any questions. Thanks, Chris. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll follow.
All righty. Well, we're going to make it easy for you today. May I have a motion for approval of resolution three ninety?
I'll make that one.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, I'll ask Ryan to call the roll.
Mr. Sonato?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks again. We'll, we'll get this signed for you. And we appreciate your joining us. As we say to everybody, you are very welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but if you have to head back, we understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. Take care. Proposed resolution three ninety-one and three ninety-two come to us from our district judges. Whoops. Bear with me just a second, please. Thirty-one, three ninety-two, and Amy Demuccio, our court administrator, is with us to talk about them. I will repeat, thank you for your patience today. I know it's, you're very busy upstairs. I'm sorry we held you this long. So thanks for bearing with us. Maybe to save time, because it looks like they're similar. One proposal, three ninety-one, deals with Judge Nicholson's office, if I'm not mistaken. And three ninety-two deals with Judge Russo's office, if I'm not mistaken. And this is the postage meters. But I'll let you give us all the details if you could.
Yes. Each of the magisterial district offices have a postage meter that we lease. And the previous leases on these two machines actually expired in September. So we need to renew a lease and they will provide new equipment to increase maintenance. The monthly fee is seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents. The previous lease was sixty-seven dollars and two cents. So that's only a six dollar and thirty cent increase. And the previous leases were also for sixty months. That would be the length of the new leases.
Thank you for that. I assume when these are signed, will they be retroactive to, back, to go back to September?
I don't, I guess I don't have any answer for that. We do not have the new equipment yet.
I see.
So perhaps they were going to affect when signed, that's when we get the new equipment delivered.
I understand. Okay, that's fine. We'll certainly do our best to move this process along. And I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions for you, Amy. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sonato?
No.
Gentlemen, to save time, would you be willing to make a motion for both three ninety-one and three ninety-two?
I make a motion. We accept both resolutions.
Thank you. And Mr. Kennedy?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Both three ninety-one and three ninety-two, as submitted to us by Ms. Demuccio. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So nice of you to join us and sorry we kept you as long as we did.
Thank you.
Take care, Amy. Thanks again, Leanne. Proposed resolution three ninety-three is a transfer request that comes to us under the commissioner's jurisdiction. And what we're doing today is taking a, making a transfer from the, is this the commissioner's contingency?
It's the commissioner's contingency.
Thank you. And it will be transferred to the sheriff's office in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Go to the sheriff's vehicle expense line item. And this is to cover vehicle expenses for his squad cars. Is this for purchasing or maintenance repair, a little bit of both?
Neither. Actually, at the beginning of the year, we purchased two new sheriff vehicles. Actually, probably about a year ago, but when he ordered them, they finally came in. Now you need to outfit those cars with the correct radio systems and stickers and all the equipment. And that's the cost to do two cars.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Sonato, do you have questions on this proposal?
That's very straightforward.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, any questions?
No, no.
Thank you. May I have a motion for resolution three ninety-three?
I'll make a motion.
So, thank you both, gentlemen, and we'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a number of transfers. It's that time of year. Gentlemen, stop me if you have questions. And if not, we get to the end, we can take one motion if you so choose. Recycling is asking for a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar transfer from their contingency into their telephone and internet. The maintenance department is asking for a total transfer of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. All of it's coming from maintenance and repairs. Two thousand, two thousand is going into their water line item. Five thousand is going into their, I assume, natural gas line item. And six hundred and fifty-five dollars is going into their electric line item. Sheriff's office asking for a total transfer of fifty-two hundred dollars. Seventeen hundred is coming from Office Minor and going into maintenance and repairs. A thousand dollars coming from travel and training, going into the uniform line item. And then Office Minor, they're taking twenty-five hundred and putting it also into the uniform line item. District Judge Russo is asking for a transfer of ninety dollars and sixty cents from his contingency into his equipment lease line item. The Public Safety Office is asking for a total transfer of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents from office supplies into the call-taking protocol line item. The Treasurer's Office is requesting a three hundred-dollar transfer from his contingency into his telephone and internet line item. Mental Health and Developmental Services, total amount of the transfer is a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. It's all coming from their housing line item. It goes into as follows. Fifteen thousand into mental health, social rehabilitation. A hundred thousand from mental health, community services. Twenty-five hundred from, again, from housing into mental health, community participation, I assume. That's correct. Thank you. And a hundred dollars into their postage line item. Children and Youth Services is asking for a total transfer of ten thousand, five hundred dollars. All of it coming from contracted provider care. Sixty-eight hundred goes into evidence-based programming. Thirty-seven hundred dollars goes into contracted services. The Public Defender's Office is asking for a transfer of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. All of it coming from the Public Defender contingency line item. A hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents goes towards direct image maintenance. And a hundred dollars goes to the state post line item. The jail is asking for a thirteen thousand-dollar transfer from the opioid fund contingency. All of it's coming from that contingency line item. Three thousand is going into contracted medical services. And ten thousand dollars is going into medical expenses. And you've determined that that's a legitimate expense.
Yeah, we had a bigger plan that we improved and they just dropped the money from the opioid contingency over.
Thank you, Joe. Finally, the county coroner's office is asking for a two hundred-dollar transfer from his software line item into his association dues line item. Dan, any questions on any of these? Thank you, Chris. Gentlemen, would one of you wish to make a motion to approve the requested transfers that were entered into the record?
I'll make that one.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. If there are no other questions, we'll ask Ryan to call the roll.
Mr. Sonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll note that our next regular meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners will be on Tuesday, December sixteen of twenty twenty-five at ten AM. In this room, open to public. As we noted earlier, the Lawrence County Planning Commission meeting that was to take place tomorrow has been canceled. Oh, we neglected to talk about prison board. Do you want to reiterate that the prison board already met?
We got the prison board met last Thursday. We've talked about it. That was, we moved the monthly meeting from the fifteenth to the fourth. We had some urgent business we had to take care of. We moved that and that was our only place to move the meeting until 10:00.
Chris, thank you for noting that. Public comment. We have one person, that's Debbie. Debbie?
Budget question.
Certainly.
What's the total budget?
Eight, still, I'll give you the exact number, but it's 89 million. 89 million, 997,312 dollars.
Okay, and what is the mileage kind of breakdown?
It will remain the same, but we won't go over that more than likely on when we adopt it.
Yeah.
We're going to need to know it now, so.
If you come upstairs, we'll do it.
Okay. And with all this revenue coming into the jail from out of county, did that impact the budget? Or is it just affect the jail budget?
No, it affects the overall budget. It helps, you know.
Have any idea how much revenue there was this year from that?
Yeah, I do. Just a little bit under $2 million, maybe. You know, the year's not up yet, but at last count, at the end of October, we were at 1.686. We'll park that, Debbie, a little bit. But that's where we're at. It's still November, December, two, three.
We were anticipating payment from Westmoreland County. And Chris made note of this fact, that, you know, the lack of a state budget for four months. It hit Westmoreland pretty hard. They laid off personnel during that time. And so they've been a little slow, but we do anticipate receipt of those dollars. I think they still owe for October and September. I'm doing this by memory.
We did make a payment a few weeks ago.
Okay.
But they still owe us more.
Yeah. And we know it'll come, especially now that state revenues, the state dollars are starting to flow again, but.
How much do they owe?
$120,000 or something. Was it thrown off?
I lost it, yeah.
Does that include, I mean, is that included in the revenue you already counted? Or is that going to be added to it?
Well, the budget's based off of what we project going forward.
Okay.
So in, quite frankly, we projected 2 million in 2025 as revenue, which we're going to be very close to that number. We actually decreased that line by a small amount, going into 2026. So yeah, I think it went from 2 million expected revenue last year to 1.7 this year.
I think that's all the question.
For 2026, I don't want to say this year, it's still 2025.
I will maybe know what you're saying, so I'll stop and get that.
Yeah, we would have that. And again, it's broken out, you know, some of it's for the libraries.
Right. I wanted to break down that.
Yep, we would have that upstairs.
We have it upstairs.
And again, it'll mirror, whatever we did last year, it'll be exactly the same.
I think when we adopted, in the past, when we adopted the budget, we discussed the number to that point. But.
We'll have that for you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Debbie? Okay, thank you so much. Oh, I have your packet here for you. Closing comments from my two colleagues, Mr. Sonato.
No, I just think that, like I said, we were approaching the end of the year and it was a year for us. And we're just happy that we can put a budget forward that's going to address the needs of the county and that comes foster them. So once again, Joe, these issues are not what we appreciate about.
Yes, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Mr. Kennedy? Done. Okay, sir. Joe or Ryan, anything we've overlooked?
No, sir.
All righty, thank you all. It's good seeing everybody. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Here you go, Debbie.
Oh, thanks, Dan.